We have a business item now, the draft Gateway Area Plan. Do we have a report, David?
Yeah, absolutely. I do have a report here. We've kind of got it broken into two pieces. I think both pieces are really critical, but recognizing the late hour, I also want to do a check-in at some point through the middle of my presentation and then a check-in at the end to make sure that we still have stamina to go forward. Again, we do have about 20 attendees online and I anticipate many of them will wish to make their comments known to you. I do have a PowerPoint presentation and a presentation I'd like to make for you tonight. I'm going to, for the sake of focusing on this presentation, going to kind of minimize my screen here. And so if you have questions, you want to jump in at any time to ask for a clarification, feel free to just interrupt me. I won't see you raising your hands, I guess is what I'm trying to tell you. Okay, so we'll go ahead and get started with this. The presentation shares some elements with recent presentations we've done. We had a workshop on last Thursday. We also have recorded on our website, on the SERP website, an hour-long presentation of the draft plan to orient folks to it. I'm going to focus in on a couple of key elements that I think are of interest and that we've been hearing a lot of public comment about in the presentation tonight that I'm providing for you. Just want to recognize that this plan has been put together in partnership with Plan West Partners, Ben Noble Consulting, and GHD, in partnership with the city. Okay, so, big question, why are we doing this? I'm hearing this a lot. Okay, first, it was part of climate adaptation planning. You see on the map here, the 1870 shoreline that was mapped at the time, you can see it is superimposed upon the city's map. Here's South G and H Street with our wastewater treatment plant, and the Oxbonds and marshes, treatment marshes, Highway 255, and Bayside Road. You'll see that that area mirrors this LiDAR imagery showing topography, the sort of transition between the green and red zones roughly is the approximation of that 1870 shoreline. And so that's where the bay used to be. We dyked it about 100-plus years ago. And the projections are that into the future, by 2100, these areas, if we do nothing to stop the rising sea levels, will approximate that same extent. The planned area is just outside of that. So this is part of our sea level rise adaptation planning work that we're doing. The Zone 1 is sort of the fallback zone, allowing Zone 2, which is lower-lying lands that are less protected, to succumb to sea level rise more quickly than Zone 1, where we have significant infrastructure. You've heard this rap before when we talked about our local coastal program update planning. And we talked about the strategies the city is proposing to use to retreat from this area that will be subject to sea level rise. Once Zone 1 has to be abandoned at some point in the future, it may be infeasible to defend this. That planned area, the core downtown area outside of Zone 1, is sort of the next fallback position. So that's a critical area for the City of Arcata's future development. If I can advance my slides here. The other areas of city policy that this plan implements, we have strong infill policies. Those strong infill policies are based on trying to protect the green zones, the bottom lands, the bay, and the forest lands that surround us. And so this is not new policy. This has been in effect for the last 20 years. So it implements our sustainability goals, our adaptation planning goals. In addition, through the work that we did with the housing element and the infill market study, we identified these key areas and started describing the features of development that needed to occur in these areas in order to both meet our housing and economic development goals as well as to meet our sustainability objectives. That was codified in the housing element, which was done through tons of participation with the community, starting in 2019. And that was adopted in early 2020. Ultimately, in April of 2021, City Council authorized a contract with Plan West Partners and their team to conduct this work. This work involves the Gateway Area Plan, a new code within that plan that we'll go over in depth and then some in the future, and some updates to the general plan. And so the City Council authorized this scope of services that we're working on now. Okay, so, well, what is the Gateway Plan? That's the next big question we want to address. Well, the Gateway Plan is a draft that's being circulated right now for public comment that identifies various policy areas, racial equity, equitable housing, arts and culture, open spaces, et cetera, that apply within a specific geographic region. The specific geographic region is shown in yellow here, and it's bordered by Samoa Boulevard, K Street, Alliance, O Street, and Q Street. There's 11th Street for reference. Here's the Creamery Building proper in the center of the Creamery District. And here's the trail, Class 1 Trail, that was installed along L Street. Just to give you some reference, it also includes some of the commercial areas that are along Samoa Boulevard to bring in the rest of this gateway concept. So that's the area that's in the regulatory authority of the Gateway Area Plan. Wanted also to point to this little blue dashed line. That's the coastal zone boundary. Everything south of it, or to the bottom of the screen, is within the zone. Everything north of it is outside of the coastal zone. And so when we adopt this Gateway Area Plan and the subsequent zoning ordinance associated with it, we'll also have to go through the process to submit that to the Coastal Commission for their review and approval before it becomes part of our certified LCP. Okay, so, what is the Gateway Area Plan? Now, all of these graphics are taken straight out of the plan. You can find this information in the plan, but I just wanted to walk you through it and key you into certain elements. So the Gateway Area Plan is an element of the general plan. Ultimately, it's lies exclusively to the Gateway Area, but it will be embodied within that larger general plan work. The general plan and this Gateway Area Plan outline the policy, the implementation measures, and specific programs to achieve the goals of that plan. The plan will ultimately be refined into and expressed through the Gateway Zoning Code. This is to be developed. At this point, we do not have the Gateway Zoning Code because we haven't resolved on this higher-level planning document that will set the framework. I'm going through the public process right now, including tonight, to get information on what that should look like. Well, how do we do this? There are a lot of sites in this area that are vacant or underutilized or fairly readily redeveloped. And so in the opportunity sites, starting on page 37 of the plan, we identify all of these sites. We talk about what the existing conditions are, how large the site is, and what opportunities are available on those sites, including things like open space, creek daylighting, like ped trails, medium-to-high-density residential development, et cetera. We estimate the residential unit capacity, giving a range based on the flexibility that should be built into the code, and then identify other potential uses. So there are sites A through K that we've done this for, and identified what these options and uses would be. The area in total is broken down into four specific zones, and then there's also a natural resource area. So we have the Gateway Barrel District and the southernmost portion. Got an homage to the old Cal Barrel that operated in that area. There's the Gateway Corridor, which is a commercial corridor that encompasses parts of Samoa as well as K Street. Those will have specific standards associated with that corridor. There's the Gateway Hub, sort of the central area, the heart of the Gateway Area. And then we have these neighborhood transition, Gateway Neighborhood Transition areas, where you would have different zoning standards in each of these different areas. So, Table 7 in the document talks about high level, what land use structure would look like. Goes through each of these different districts. You'll see the Gateway Barrel District over here on the left-hand side, the Gateway Hub, Gateway Corridor, Gateway Neighborhood. They all have different densities and development standards. And then there's this crazy thing about community benefits, bonus tiers, and we'll talk about those in just a minute. But to go through this exercise, let's look first at the Gateway Barrel District. So this is the highest density area on the southernmost portion of the Gateway Area, right along Samoa there. You'll notice that the Gateway Barrel District allows for the highest number of maximum stories, the tallest buildings. Currently, it's proposed eight stories. Now, certainly, this is part of the discussion we need to have with the community. Many people have thought that this is too tall. Several people embrace it. This is definitely part of the community discussion that we need to have. The tiers start at four, at what we call the base tier. You can see, base tier is four levels. So minimum four levels, going up to five, six, seven, and eight, depending on the community benefits bonus tier that you fit into. I'll describe in a little bit more detail what these entail. But just know that as you go up this community benefits bonus tier, you get more elevation, more maximum stories. You're providing more back to the community in these community benefits, which function largely like conditions of approval do with a new structure for permitting. Again, the minimum residential density instead of the maximum residential density. So we flipped it on its head. We've said, "Look, we want to get units out of these projects." Minimum base tier, 18 dwelling units per acre, maximum with the community benefits bonus tier, maximum, minimum, feel the lowest that you can accept. If you have that highest bonus tier is 53. So you'd have a minimum of 53 units in those projects. Okay, so just to look at an example of what this might look like. Many folks in the community hear eight stories. They imagine walking up to the street frontage, an eight-story building shooting straight up in the air, imposing, looming over them. That's not the idea. Let's walk through an example of that in the Gateway Barrel District. Gateway Barrel District has a lot of opportunities for improving habitat. There are some wetlands. There are some green spaces. You can connect these with adjacent green spaces that are already included in the Natural Resources zoning district, but some trails throughout. Trails would also likely go through the Barrel District. You're going to need a new transportation system to carry cars that'll be traveling off of L Street and/or Samoa. And again, this is cartoonish on purpose. The intent is not that this is the actual development, but that we would develop a system for a concept here, a campus concept for how this could be developed. You might have, under the current proposal, some eight-story towers, some seven-story buildings, maybe a couple of four-story buildings included in there. And then there would also be an area that would be open to the public, similar to the plaza. That would be a great community asset. And all of this is, again, to be determined through this zoning code. But you can see with this sort of cartoonish rendition of a concept plan that there's quite a bit of available open space. And so all of this open space could be dedicated to community purposes, community uses, privately-held public open spaces. Some of it could be dedicated. It could be trails. It could be outdoor dining areas for restaurants. There's lots of uses that could be used here. Or it could be done in that area. Let's take a look at one of the lower tiers. So going into the Gateway Hub, that's the next lowest tier for development. And again, the way that these community benefits bonus tiers work is that they're optional up to a certain level, depending on the zone you're in. In this particular zone, in the Gateway Hub, it's not permitted to enter the bonus tier four. You can't do an eight-story building. Many people have spread the misconception that there's going to be eight-story buildings all over the district. That's simply not true. In the current proposal, the way that it's defined, it's also simply not true because we haven't gone through the public process yet and identified what the maximum build-out should be. These are going to be trade-offs for the community, for the council, for future generations to identify, you know, do we allow for larger buildings, which would be a more efficient use of the space, the limited land base that we have left, or do we use smaller buildings and require other uses instead? Or do we require smaller buildings and not have as much open space? So there's lots of policies that could be balanced here. Getting back to the tiers, you can see that on the Gateway Hub, you could build up to a seven-story building, but the base tier is four. Again, you'd have to provide those community benefits minimum densities. They follow the same ranges. Minimum height, minimum stories is still two and three. And so on and so forth for the Gateway Corridor and the Gateway Neighborhood. You see the Gateway Neighborhood, which was the transitional zone, would allow up to a five-story building. So Table 7 kind of explains how these community benefits tiers work. Not everybody gets their information real well through a table, so I'm going to show you graphically what that means. In this area, you could have maximum of eight stories. In the Gateway Hub, maximum of seven stories, Corridor 6, and the Neighborhood 5. All of these would require community amenities, including publicly-available private outdoor space, alternative transportation options, energy and sustainability, and affordable housing, for example. We went to the committees, the City of Arcata, the various committees, and sought their input for what they would rank highest in terms of community amenities and had discussions with them through 2021, with intensive meetings through July of 2021. And we plan on going back and sharing with them what we heard and how we used it. The way we used it was to translate it into this community benefit program, which will be created through the Gateway Zoning Code, and it'll create a community benefits program where projects that provide higher levels of community benefits are permitted greater intensity. Utilize and build upon the tiered incentive system presented above in Table 6, 7, and Image 2. So this plan is outlining the framework that will be implemented through this community benefits program in the zoning code. I'm going to show you an example of that next, what it could look like. We've done a little bit of back-of-the-napkin work to try and figure out how does this actually work. I also wanted to point to that last policy, that we would periodically review the community benefits program to ensure that it's still achieving the goals that we established for it. So those could be tweaked one way or the other. So the community benefits bonus track, depending on which one you're on, you need to provide, the way that it's structured right now, greater than six, greater than seven, greater than eight, or greater than nine points through the community amenities points system. Well, how do you get those points? Well, let's take housing, for example. Housing is an important element of this plan. There's lots of ways that you could get points, and you could only get a maximum of five points within this category. This would encourage, or require, rather, the projects that come in under this program to select these community amenities in different policy areas. So we're starting with housing. We could go on to energy and resources. We could go on to affordable housing. I'm sorry, go on to open space and some of the other areas. But for this, for example, Category 1, housing amenities, maximum of five points. You might say, "Hey, look, we want owner-occupied housing." We've heard this a lot from folks. So the total percentage of the residential units that are owner-occupied is greater than some number. We need to figure that number out. This would allow those larger-scale, high-density buildings to condo and then sell off those individual condos and provide homeownership in the community. Maybe we have deed-restricted affordable housing. They'd get a bonus point for that to fit towards this community amenities program. Small units that are affordable by design could be one of those. And so each of these would fall within these different policy areas: housing creation, arts and culture, open space, green building sustainability, active and alternative transportation, enhanced architectural features and exterior design, and retail and job creation. So those are the, in the Gateway Area Plan, those are the general ideas of what we'd be drilling down into in the zoning code once we've resolved on this. Okay, well, the next big question, I can hear you thinking it already, but what about open space and trails? We have identified some pretty exciting new trail and open space networks. Just going through the open space real quick, down in the Barrel District. I'd mentioned the plaza-sized area, this exact location to be determined. The brownish-reddish, whatever color you see this outline here, shows areas within the Barrel District as well as the Gateway Hub, and including some of the corridor. Each of these would provide some private, or there would be private, open, private, open space that's accessible to the public within these boundaries. Not necessarily on every project, but we'd identify those through the zoning code. Scooting over just a little bit, there's the Natural Resources Zoned area that has wetlands on it now and homeless encampments and bicycle shops, maybe not the best use of land for the community in general. We could turn this into a public amenity, a privately-held, open space that has trails. Scooting up to the northern end of the district, we have Shea Park that extends down to some creek restoration work that has been completed and/or is planned, that connects the creek between 11th Street and Alliance. In addition, there are some connections between the O Street extent and M Street that could be expanded, be based on existing easements. Okay, well, what about trails? The trails element is really exciting. Sagan Rob Homeland, one of our consultants on the Plan West team, and he told me that the total number of trails is more than doubling in this area. So looking at the southern end, we have multi-use, Class 2, Class 3 bike route, Class 3 Bike Boulevard, multi-use paths, Class 2 bike lanes, et cetera, et cetera. We've even got planned for a Woonorf. Woonorf is essentially a low-speed street that cars may use, but cars expect to see bikes and peds milling about, and it's kind of a people street. So looking at the trails that could be extended from L Street through the district, along the rail corridors, existing, along Q Street, Bike Boulevard transformed on 8th and 9th Streets and extended on K Street. So lots of new bike and ped infrastructure here that will be implemented. Moving north just a little bit, you can see the L Street. In this proposal, the trail that we have would need to be relocated just a little bit to accommodate some of the circulation patterns, but we're maintaining that, and then we're adding a new trail on N Street that gets you up to Alliance Road at the northern end. I know what you're thinking now, but what about bikes, peds, and parking? The circulation system is going to change if adopted in this current version. Right now, we have G and H Street as one-way couplets. Each of those has two lanes of traffic, two lanes of parking, and then sidewalks. There's a bike lane on each of these in each direction. 8th and 9th Street are existing one-way couplets through the downtown. All of those roads are represented here in white. The proposed new roads, transformation of the road system, is shown in yellow. So extending the 9th and 8th Street couplet, one-way couplet, extending that all the way out to N Street and providing additional bike competibilities on there, and then transforming K Street into a one-way, one-lane northbound, and L Street into a one-way, one-lane southbound couplet that includes some exciting bike competibilities as well. Let's just take a quick look at K Street, this one-way concept that's proposed here. Zooming in on K a little bit closer, you'll see that there's modified intersections where the sidewalk is bulled out. That makes for a smaller intersection crossing, a safer intersection crossing. Again, it's one-way. Northbound on K, 8th would be one-way. And so this drastically reduces the number of interactions between cars and people crossing the street and cars and bikes. I also wanted to point to the fact that the bike lane is separated here. It's not completely segregated, but it at least has this line buffer, and there's a special place for bikes to be as opposed to the current situation where there's a shero in K Street. I'm willing to get out there and rumble with the vehicles, but not everybody's comfortable doing that. And it truly is not the safest place for me to be either. Looking at what we're doing on L, again, the concept, maintaining the segregated trail system and turning it into a one-way with on-street parking. Let's flip it over here so we're facing the right direction, facing north. There's currently a landscaping buffer, I'm sorry, facing south. There's currently a landscaping buffer on the far right-hand side. You get on to the segregated Class 1 Trail system that we all love and ride on. There's a vegetative buffer, and then you get into the vehicle lane. We would turn this from a two-way into a one-way and provide on-street vehicle parking with an eight-foot sidewalk. Currently, it looks like this. You would maintain that landscape buffer, have the rail, rail the trail, have a new vegetative, or maintain the vegetative buffer, the vehicle lanes, vehicle parking, and sidewalk. That's what it'll look like on the ground. Just looking quickly at 8th and 9th Street, again, this one-way couplet, lots of on-street parking, segregated bike lanes, or special bike lanes, not completely segregated, but wrapping around the entire district, those bulled-out sidewalks with special crossing areas. So huge improvement in terms of bike and pet access, modest reduction in on-street parking, but not significant, and lots of ideas for improved access to individual properties. Again, you'll note that we have planned here some public access. We still need to, some of these elements, we still need to get concurrence with the property owners. So this is the plan. We still need lots of implementation. L Street for one, and some of these others for another. I did want to address an issue that came up in the public. They said, "Hey, your drawing shows the sidewalk going right through my house. My house is there. How are you doing that?" I just want to let people know that the scale of these drawings, these are for illustrative purposes. Certainly, if there are areas where there are conflicts, we'll work with the engineering department and City Manager's Office to ensure that we resolve those conflicts amicably. So I just want to wrap up by focusing again a little bit on this special place we call home, or a special place where we work, or a special place where we visit. It's an amazing location. It's growing because it's such an amazing location. We want to take concepts that are tried and true, like our downtown area, the mixed-use vibrant community that we see down there, and leverage those. We want to multiply the rainbows in our community. We want to be able to provide additional recreational opportunities and places to work in this area. So it's mixed-use, mixed-income, mixed everything. It's a great place. It's kind of a cultural center, arts center. We want to be able to leverage this great arts and culture while respecting the green spaces we have around us. And really, the goal is to build community through this plan. I understand a lot of people have been involved in the plan for a long time. A lot of people are feeling late to the game. You're not late to the game. The party's just starting. We want to hear from you. The City Council wants to hear from you, and so does the Planning Commission. And so that is the end. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or kind of skip to check-in, see how we're doing on time, and maybe offer the next presentation, which is also very good and presented by our Plan West team.
Are we taking any public comment, or is this just a strictly business item?
I would advise you take at least some public comment. We do have a little over 20 people on the line, many of whom I suspect will wish to make some public comment.
Yeah, let's let them. Yeah, let's do it.
Okay, so skip the next presentation.
What is the commission thing? Are you guys ready? Are you guys awake? Do you want to watch more?
I mean, are we, what's the goal to get? Where are we trying to get to tonight? And are we discussing possibly continuing this whole discussion over a number of meetings? Or are we just going until we can't do anymore this evening?
Yeah, no, that's a really good question. This is one of many opportunities over the course of the next year to engage on this topic. The document was just released, and so we wanted to share it with the public. We wanted to share it with the decision-makers. Certainly, if you have comments, if you've read the document or if you want to just absorb, that's great. No decisions are being made, no final decisions are being made on this document at either tonight's meeting or at tomorrow night's City Council meeting. Ultimately, the documents won't be adopted until the environmental work is done. That'll take us approximately a year, so about this time next year, we'll be coming back and towards the fall and winter, we'll be having discussions about adoption of this and many other long-range planning documents that are proposed. I do want to be clear that over the short term, next couple of months, we do need to make some high-level decisions about the Gateway Plan because we have to start producing the zoning code. And so we'll be spending December, January, February, trying to have as much discussion with the committees, the commission, the City Council, to make sure that we've got a direction with the Gateway Area Plan. And then we'll leverage that into the Gateway Zoning Code that will further refine the details on how to implement this vision.
Follow us on Facebook and Instagram to learn more, and visit our website Or sign up for our Long Range Planning listserv that will give you up-to-date information on upcoming meetings and summaries of past meetings.